Today is Monday, December 17th. We're going to call the meeting to order and as usual, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, we will grant the Westwood Media Center the right to record the meeting. Ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting?
None.
All right, seeing none. First, we have on the chairman's update, we have something special to tell you about. We have our Leading by Example program is a, was received by, an award was received by Mr. Thomas Philbin, who was honored for his program, well, I'll give you a little bit of idea. Tom does, is our energy director for the town of Westwood, and Tom has done some great things in this town, and he was recognized at the State House for it. So, Tom has received an award on December 6th with a public sector individual award for the 12th Annual Leading by Example Awards. Tom received this award because of a number of clean energy initiatives and a broad stakeholder and collaborative collaboration across town. As a recipient of a D O E R, Green Communities Energy Manager Grant Award, this includes efforts advancing the installation of a 780 kilowatt, is that right, Tom? KW? Kilowatt of solar in the town, extensive energy efficiency projects, and initiating efforts for green community designation, and planning for the future of a near-zero energy buildings. Tom's had a career, and I think if I remember correctly, Tom, some 1962 is when you started in this field?
He won.
61. Started in this field, and at that time, he told them that there was no future in it. Apparently, many people were wrong. Over an extensive career in the energy field, he's been involved in all kinds of power projects throughout the world, and specifically in energy efficiency over the last 20 years. Tom is a resident of Westwood, and he's here tonight with his son, and he has served as the town's energy manager since 2013. And the award and congratulatory citations were presented to Tom by Nick Connors, the Green Communities Director. So, round of applause for Tom. Did you came in, did you want to say something, Tom? This is your...
I wish I could say beyond that.
Okay.
I thank everybody for the recognition, and it's been a pleasure working in Westwood. Cooperation I've gotten from the selectmen, from everybody else has been gratifying, and certainly helped me do all the things I've been doing.
And I know Tom gave a great speech at the thing, but he also wanted to thank Trish Healy, and so we'll take that opportunity too. You remember that you were thanking Trish for getting your initiatives done and on time, so...
Right, and making me look a lot better than I am.
I couldn't go to the event, the most recent event, but Tom and I and Trish went in the summer of 2017, when we received $250,000 in grant money. And I've told everybody that there was people there from across the state, all these communities, and it was like being with a rock star. Everybody knew Tom, everybody wanted to get to Tom, and you're just so well-respected in the entire field. You're such a credit to Westwood, so congratulations.
Well, a little insight to the awards that were given, with the exception of somebody who's in a state-level position, Tom was the only individual recognized, otherwise it was other municipalities.
Yeah, it's amazing.
So, that speaks further to the esteem to which he is held, and I think, I think the list that was given was very short compared to the amount of things that you've been able to help us accomplish. So, I think it's actually bigger than the state was giving him recognition for.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, Tom.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you for coming in. So, moving along to our scheduled action this evening. First, we have the Westwood Courtyard, the TMI Hospitality. We have a change in officers. So, is that you, Nora?
Yes. We have in your packet, an application from Westwood Courtyard Marriott. The application is to remove two individuals who are no longer with the courtyard, who were listed on the original application. They're no longer associated with it, and they're not going to be replaced. So, it's just removing those two names, not adding anyone else.
Any questions?
Yes, can you tell us who they are? We don't have anything that says.
I don't have the names, just one second. No, I have the names of the ones that are remaining, not the ones that are being removed.
Why don't you go with that, so we can have it for the record?
So, the current officers, stock or ownership interest is TMI Development, OPCO Holdings LLC, Ruby Wang, Robert McCon, Lisa Anderson Hyblin. Those are the ones that should remain on.
Okay. Thank you.
And the Alcohol Review Committee voted unanimously?
They did, yes, but recommended the board vote approval.
Questions?
I move that the board grant approval to the change of officer application for TMI of Westwood Operating Company LLC, Doing Business as the Westwood Courtyard.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stand right there, Nora?
I am for a while, I've got a few on tonight.
Because you, next, we have a, we have a request from Camellas to conditionally approved extended hours.
Yes, you may recall, on September, you extended their hours, so they could operate, they had been operating until 9:00 PM on a daily basis, and they had requested an extension from Sunday through Thursday to go until 10:30, and Friday and Saturday to stay open until 11:00. And you granted that conditional upon them filing satisfactory paperwork and getting their renewal application on time, and not having any problems with the later hours. I can tell you that they did a great job. Everything was on time, accurate, complete, and handled very well. So, the Alcohol Review Committee reviewed this and also recommends that the board grant approval of a permanent request and the extension of hours.
Was Chief Silva part of the Alcohol Review Committee review of this?
He was, I believe he called, did he call into that meeting?
And no issues?
No. And it seems to be well-received. I've noted that the parking lot is full in the evenings, you know, where it had been at 9:00 o'clock, completely closed. So, I think it's, I think the community appreciates the longer hours.
Okay, I move that we approve the permanent extension of hours for Camellas, DBA Camellas, Doing Business as Camellas, to Sunday through Thursday, hours to be from 10:00 AM to 10:30 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Norfolk Golf Course, the annual change in officers and the nonprofit club?
Yes, they've been doing this for, I believe, more than 10 years now, where they operate on Mother's Day, and they request early hours for their alcohol service to begin at 10:00 AM, so that they can serve Mother's Day brunch. And the Alcohol Review Committee recommends that the board approve this application.
And we also have a change in the officers?
Yes, the change in officers is, every year they change. The officers for this year are Stephen Marino as president, Edward McNally as vice president, Brian Condon as treasurer, and Lorraine Beaumont as secretary.
Any questions?
We should do that as two motions, I would think, right?
Yeah, probably.
Corey, checks are done on all the officers, that's part of the review process, is it? Or what is it?
On the officers, I don't know that the board members, just the officers, I believe.
And is that part of the Alcohol Review Committee's?
We don't actually review the Corey's, we just hear that they've been completed.
Yeah, but, okay, but it's a check.
It is, it's part of the application.
The chief would indicate that there's a problem.
Right, okay.
I move that the board approve the change in officers for the Norfolk Golf Club.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the board approve the extension of hours for the Norfolk Golf Club for Sunday, May 12, 2019, for the club's annual Mother's Day brunch.
And that's beginning at 10:00 AM? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so next, we have a public hearing for all license renewals, CVs, on-premise alcohol, off-premise alcohol, entertainment, class one, class two automobile dealers, junk dealers, library and taxi operators for the 2019 calendar year. And we have a list.
You do.
All right, so, we'll do them just quickly as far as junk dealers. We have Dolobani Jewelers, K Jewelers, and GameStop. For class auto, class one auto dealer, we have Audi of Westwood, Porsche of Westwood, Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, and Prime Acura. For class two auto dealer, we have Enterprise Rent-A-Car LLC, common vittic...
Do we want to take a few at a time?
I'm just naming them so if anyone's here for the public hearing, and then we can do them one at a time. Birdie's Creative Creamery, Panda Express, BB's Cafe and Bakery, Panera Bread, Chipotle, Starbucks Coffee on High Street, and as well as University Ave. We have Dunkin' Donuts, we have Three and Four in Town. And so, we'll just say Dunkin' Donuts for now. Stewart, Westwood Cafe, Sodexo Services. We have Target, we have Tastefully Done Restaurant and Catering, Epicurean Feast, Wegmans, Islington Pizza, Witch Witch Sandwich Shop, Lifetime Cafe, Westwood Jade, Westwood Pizza, Mercedes-Benz Cafe, and Next Dine Cafe. And we have on-premise all alcohol, we have Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Blue Orchid, yeah, Orchard, excuse me, Chiaro Bistro, Del Frisco's Grill, Norfolk Golf Course, Not Your Average Joes, Westwood Courtyard, and Wild Blossom. On-premise CV for wine and malt beverages, we have Camellas in the Toast Office. Off-wine premises and malt, we have Roche Brothers, High Street Market, Lambert's Rainbow Fruit, and Wegmans. And finally, for entertainment licenses, excluding our taxi licenses, of course, we have Chiaro Bistro, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Wild Blossom, Wegmans, Not Your Average Joes, Camellas, Blue Orchid, the Toast Office, Westwood Courtyard, and Del Frisco's Grill.
And then you have three unattended donation containers at First Baptist Church, 808 High Street, Temple Beth David, 7 Clavatry Street, and Westwood Eye Care's Lion Club Dropbox at 738 High Street.
Okay. So, we'll start with our first group, for our junk dealers, Dolobani Jewelers, K Jewelers, and GameStop. Any questions? Any comments or questions for the public? Seeing none?
I move that we authorize the junk dealer license for 2019 to Dolobani Jewelers, K Jewelers, and GameStop.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do class one auto dealers. We have Audi of Westwood, Porsche Westwood, Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, and Prime Acura. Any questions or comments from the public?
I move that the board authorize a class one auto dealer ship for 2019 for Audi of Westwood, Porsche of Westwood, Mercedes-Benz of Westwood, and Prime Acura.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Class two auto dealer, Enterprise Rent-A-Car LLC. Anyone?
I move that the board approve a class two auto dealer license for Enterprise Rent-A-Car LLC for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And rather this time, John, than repeat them twice, I'll just say for the CV licenses?
The aforementioned. I move that the...
Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, okay.
I move that the board authorize the 23 aforementioned common vitticular licenses for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On-premise CV all alcohol licenses.
Any issues on any of these, Nora?
None at all.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none?
I move that the board authorize on-premise CV all alcohol licenses for Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Blue Orchid, Chiaro Bistro, Del Frisco's Grill, Norfolk Golf Club, Not Your Average Joes, Westwood Courtyard, and Wild Blossom.
We have two more.
And Camellas and the Toast Office.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do off-premises wine and malt. Anyone? Nope, okay.
I move that the board authorize off-premises wine and malt licenses for Roche Brothers Supermarket, High Street Market, Lambert's Rainbow Fruit, and Wegmans.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For entertainment licenses, seeing no public comment?
I move that the board authorize entertainment licenses for Chiaro Bistro, Wild Blossom, Not Your Average Joes, Blue Orchid, Westwood Courtyard, Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, Wegmans, Camellas, the Toast Office, and Del Frisco's for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then for the unattended, unattended donation containers?
Yes.
First Baptist Church, Temple Beth David, and Westwood Eye Care.
All right, any public comment?
And they just submit renewal of their application, like everything else?
They completed their application, yes, and they had inspections.
I just, I don't, I don't see that in the packet.
It's not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
This is the first time we renew.
It's the first renewal, yeah, so they weren't on the chart.
So, I move that we authorize unattended donation containers for Temple Beth David, help me out here.
First Baptist Church and Westwood Eye Care.
First Baptist Church and Westwood Eye Care for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now we come to our taxi licenses, which are not as clean for the most part.
Christine will help with those.
Happy to move away, huh?
All right, so currently, we have 10 licenses right now.
Two guys.
With 18 vehicles, mostly at University Station.
Right.
So, eight companies with 15 vehicles total, completed all the paperwork?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we have no issues with any of those, no citations, police are fine with them, inspections completed, except for two companies have, each have some vehicles that are not in service, but they're licensed to have them.
Okay.
So, Christine, could you just give us a refresher on the number of licenses we can issue? When this first started?
Yeah.
We had a capacity issue.
Correct.
And could you just remind on that?
So, when we first started, we issued 21 licenses total, and that was about three or four years ago. We've dwindled down a little bit, and the police and the, and the taxi license drivers have all sort of commented that it was a lot, 21 vehicles at University Station was a lot of vehicles. So, as those ones that sort of fell off or didn't renew, we never reissued new ones to meet that cap. There is no cap on our regulations. The board may issue as many licenses as they feel that meet the services of the community. But I believe even with this number, 15, 18 vehicles, we're still meeting the services to the community. Residents have the right to call any taxi company.
Right.
And they aren't knocking down the door, saying, oh, let me get one.
Nope. And we only have, the only taxi stand we have in Westwood is the MBTA station. These companies located in Westwood are allowed to pick up to someone hailing them. So, if someone's on the side, and they wave, they can pick those people up. They're not licensed in Westwood, they're not supposed to pick those people up. Couple, we have some agreements with Fox Hill Village to offer services to seniors. Some have agreements with Senior Center to offer rides for the seniors. So, the reputation that we have and relationship we have with the current companies is fairly good. I don't think we need to add more. The police don't believe we need to add more.
So, we just have to deal with this incomplete or some vehicles that have dropped from...
Right.
They've dropped out because there's not enough business, or they had family issues and things.
Right.
So, should we take one at a time?
Well, we got, what, eight to approve, and then one is questionable?
Two are questionable. Two, two didn't complete their inspections at all.
Okay.
Their paperwork is in, they did pay their fees, but they never brought the vehicles in for inspection, and each company had a reason as to why they didn't, and weren't sure if they were going to.
So, let's take one at a time.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So, Alpha Taxi Service of Westwood, two cabs.
Yes.
No issues.
Nope.
American Norfolk Taxi, one cab.
No issues.
American Taxi, one cab.
No issues.
The next one?
Family Taxi.
Family Taxi.
Family Taxi, no issues, two cabs. No issues.
No issues, sorry.
King's Taxi, one cab.
No issues.
Maurice Cab, two, currently only one in service.
Right, so Maurice has a license for two cabs, he only has one in service. He has not had a second one inspected, because he doesn't have a second vehicle.
Okay, so we should only approve one license, then?
We, that's the recommendation, approve him contingent on passive, passive inspection of his second vehicle.
What you're doing, in effect, is approving him to have licenses. He only has one vehicle that's been inspected, so his only one vehicle can operate. If he wants to put a second vehicle on, he has to get it inspected.
Why don't we just only approve one?
Right, and if he wants to get a second one, he can come before us and apply.
He doesn't even have a second car.
Either way, you want to do it.
Yeah, I'd rather do that.
That'd be like going back to the others and saying, let's approve five for each one, but they've only got one car, you know, it doesn't...
And so, Christine, Norfolk Town Taxi, two, there's no issue?
No issue with his.
And then the On Time Taxi is similar to Maurice?
Correct. Four, he had a license for four for the 2018 year, but he currently only has two in service.
And is that the one that...
No, the other two are different.
So, I'm going to make, when I make the motion, I'm going to make the motion on actually what's in service. So, for Maurice, it's two, and on On Time Taxi, it's two.
Okay.
Maurice is one.
Sorry, Maurice is one, and On Time is two.
That's fine.
Is that, we all good with that? Okay. I move that we authorize a taxi license to Alpha Taxi Service of Westwood for two cabs for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we authorize a taxi license for 2019 to American Norfolk Taxi for one cab.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
American Taxi for 2019, I move that we authorize one taxi license.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
For Family Taxi for 2019, I move that we authorize two licenses.
All those in favor?
No.
Sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I authorize that for 2019, I move that we authorize for 2019 one license to King's
Taxi.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that for Maurice Cab for 2019, we authorize one license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we authorize Norfolk Town Taxi, two cab licenses for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For On Time Taxi, I move that we authorize two licenses for 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
So, what's with Hello Taxi?
So, Hello Taxi, Sergeant Sicard contacted him when he didn't bring his vehicle in for inspection, same thing, his paperwork was all in, everything was fine with his paperwork, fee paid, but he never notified us that he didn't have a taxi in service for the entire year. So, he, or for both, I'm sorry, for two taxis. So, he's been not operating in the town of Westwood with two taxis for the entire year. His registration was taken off those taxis that he had registered with Westwood and registered as passenger vehicles. So, you can't, you can't use a passenger vehicle in a taxi cab company. When Sergeant Sicard did ask him if he was going to renew, he said he wanted to renew, but he didn't have cars.
So, I don't think we need to do anything affirmative here.
Correct.
As far as we're concerned, he's lapsed for us, right?
We can set it up that when he comes in, to get him inspected, then we'll come bring him back.
Yeah, if he brings them in, yeah. So, what it, the way our regulations read is if their license is lapsed, it's the fee. The fee will go, would turn into a, he'd have to apply for a new license. So, if you renewed his license, he stays as the current renewal fee contingent upon his bringing it in. We wouldn't issue him anything. He would, he would be told he's not allowed to operate until the passage of his inspection, but as of January 1st, he's not, he doesn't have a valid license.
He wouldn't have a license to put in a car to be able to use, it'd be held in advance.
Somebody may come in and want to start here, and I don't think we should have an outstanding license for somebody who doesn't even have taxis registered.
I agree.
I think he, he's allowed it to lapse, I think it's done.
Yeah, I don't think we need to take any action.
Right. And it's same, it's very similar for a Wada Taxi as well.
I mean, we meet on the 7th, so they don't need to be out of technically seven days.
Exactly, right.
So...
I mean, neither one of them has been operating for a year.
Right, I...
For the entire, yeah, for almost the entire year.
Okay.
Okay.
Take no action on those.
That's fine.
Okay, that's it for our license renewals, which means that we must be ready for our budget update.
You know, I wouldn't take it personal, but the crowd's leaving.
You're the crowds. They always do.
And I'm going to say, what crowd?
That's okay.
And then, there were four.
It's that time of, it's that time of year.
That time of year, we're here to talk about the FY '20 budget. Just a reminder that at your last several meetings, you've looked at our FY '18 end-of-year results, you've viewed kind of where we stand financially in the current year, and then your most recent meeting, you set the FY '19 tax rate and the ship with commercial residential property. So, you've done a lot of financial material in the last couple of meetings, and now that sets us up to kind of start to move forward and look at the next year. So, I did just want tonight, just to do a couple of quick slides on University Station Avenue, just to update on where we are with that.
I know. I know.
Do you have it, Nancy, or I have a handout if you want?
Do you have a handout?
I do have a handout.
It's, yeah, it's challenging. The way it comes up, it's high.
I was thinking that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Yeah, thank you.
Mike, also, I want for Christmas, there's a monitor on that wall.
Yeah, no kidding, me too.
So, just do a couple of quick slides on University Station Avenue, take a look at our budget preview for FY '20, and we're very early in the process. A quick look at the municipal budget, and then what our next steps are. And we always like to put this slide in when we meet with the selectmen on the budget. You're looking at trying to handle so many things in the overall budget, and we just like to remind people that a lot of other people kind of just can, and work on certain sections of the budget, and the selectmen have to put everything together and take care of so many different things that we're trying to balance when you do the overall budget. Just first, you know, looking at University Station, it's just been a tremendous help in helping us to shore up our commercial property value. That slide on the top shows commercial value as a percent of total value in town, and on the rightmost side of that slide, University Station has helped us take that up from a low in the last couple of years of 12% before the project started, to now almost 16% of the town's total value. And that's been so significant. And what that does, because we have the split tax rate, in the current year, while they're about 16% of value, they're going to pay 26, almost 27% of the total taxes in town. And we'd just like to remind our residents, that's just so important to each and every home in town. This next slide shows our kind of average tax bill in town in the current year, shown in green, just over $9,200. That bill would be well over $10,600 if we had a single tax rate, if we didn't have the commercial helping to subsidize. And that split tax rate saves in the current year the average home over $1,300. So, the commercial split tax rate is so significant for us, and really, University Station has really helped to shore that up for us over the last couple of years. This is one of the original slides that the board used before University Station even started, when that project was being reviewed and the selectmen were considering all of the parameters in allowing that project to go forward, and what they were presenting to the community. The selectmen outlined before any new money came in that these were the things we would use the money for. Any of the new growth would be used to handle any direct costs needed to service the project, including police, or public safety, or school impact, help provide for sustainable growth to our school and municipal operating budgets, so difficult to give those budgets what they need sometimes with the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2, and we could use University Station for that. Use funding to help with debt service for some major capital projects, to keep those within Prop 2 and 1/2. Help to limit the tax bill increase each year, help maintain our reserve accounts, to maintain our AAA bond rating, and to help stabilize that split tax rate that we just looked at. And the estimate at the initial outset of the study was about $5 million in new revenue revenue each year, about $2 million in associated direct costs, for about $3 million in new revenue for the town. So that's really what was outlined and kind of, uh, laid out to the community as far as how the money would be used. Not one single item, but to try to get to a lot of different things. And the next couple of slides show what has actually happened. Uh, so this is the slide that we show, how much new growth has come in each year in the budget. So new growth is the additional revenue each year, uh, from the new value that's there in that fiscal year. So this slide, the bar at the top shows the amount each year, with heavy new dollars coming in FY '16, '17, or actual amount for FY '19, $276,000, and then the total, $5.4 million. So that $5.4 million is in new annual tax dollars, uh, coming now from the University Station project. And kind of the vacant, uh, parcels down there, um, before the project really started, paid over $2 million in property, uh, property taxes. So over $7.4 million every year in taxes coming from that development, with $5.4 million in new revenue. And again, this little diagram at the bottom was, we were trying to use that money to hit many different areas of our budget and overall finances. And this slide just shows, and again, this is a slide we show at town meeting, um, we, how have we actually used that $5.4 million? How have we applied it to the budget? And the number one thing we have done with that is to help our operating budgets, the school and municipal budgets. We've used, uh, $2.6 million of that money to shore up and help, uh, our main, uh, operating budgets, where we provide our main services to the community, with $1.9 million in the school budget and $700,000 in the municipal. So we explained to people that means, if we didn't have the University Station new money, our school budget would be $1.9 million less, or if we wanted to fund the budget at that level, we would have had to have an override, uh, for those same amounts. So been really important, um, to have that for those budgets. The second item is, we have used $1.35 million for some of those associated direct costs, um, $215,000 in the school budget, and $1.1 million in the municipal budget. And again, those were for public safety needs, the additional staffing that we were able to do for police and fire. Uh, third, in the area of capital, uh, we had a one-time appropriation of this fund, $975,000 into our capital stabilization fund, and then we used, uh, an annual amount of $800,000 of this new, uh, tax revenue to finance the debt service on the, the bond for this new police facility. Uh, and again, that allowed us to keep that within Prop 2 and 1/2, and not have to go out and ask the community for a debt exemption. And then finally, each year, the selectmen, as you've done the budget, have left a piece, uh, called unallocated or unused tax levy. We're taxing from the new development, but not spending it on something new, so in a way, it's subsidizing bills for everyone in town. So there's been a piece each year that you've done that for. In the current year, FY '19, that was $555,000. So again, money we're taking in, uh, using it for services already in place, that helps give some relief, uh, to the tax bill that we're charging our residents. So that's the University Station review. And then just starting to look forward, uh, at FY '20, we start out on the revenue side, uh, and this slide here shows revenue that funds our current budget. Our current revenue budget, $98 million, uh, that town meeting voted in May, and that was about a 3% increase of the prior year. Uh, we always mention, you know, we are almost 80% based on our tax revenue, typical model for a suburban community in Massachusetts. That does make it quite difficult when we do the budget each and every year, because the taxes are restricted through that Prop 2 and 1/2 formula. Uh, so our main source of revenue, um, $77 million comes from taxes, and we have to work under that Prop 2 and 1/2 restrictions. When we start to look at, how will that revenue change for FY '20, and what will be our tax revenue for FY '20, this is the slide that we have to, um, start with. So there's a lot of numbers up there, but it really just shows the actual calculation under Prop 2 and 1/2. The rightmost column shows what we can budget for FY '20 in taxes. Uh, we just start with 76.6 million, which comes really from our limit the year before. We could increase that by 2 and 1/2%, and for FY '20, that's $1.9 million. Then we can add in estimates for new growth, and we separate that between the University Station and all other. Um, so for all other, we use for a budget estimate, $450,000. The University Station additional growth.
And we just, sorry. So where does that other new growth, so if people have an idea, because that's a lot higher than University Station, so where does that new growth come from?
Uh, any new residential development, any new, um, residential just home improvements, people doing, um.
Additions.
Additions and, and upgrades to their homes.
Yep.
Um, any other new commercial revenue. We don't have to separate that, we do that just to kind of track the University Station revenue specifically.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
And, uh, always we point out, that's our budget estimate. If you track back with the 450 years over the last couple of years, those amounts will be actual in those years, uh, now that are listed. We are conservative in our early budget estimates, because we have to be. Um, that number won't get certified until next fall, by the Department of Revenue, we have to at least meet that number in order to get our tax rate certified.
Okay.
Uh, we would be, uh, at this point, estimating $125,000 in new University Station growth for FY '20. Um, so total 79.1 million, we then add on the exempt debt that we're carrying currently, 1.3 million, that's for, uh, the net amounts we're paying for our high school and our library projects. So in total, $80.4 million is what we could tax, and on a budget basis, we're starting with, what would we actually tax? 79.7 million, leaving $680,000 unused at this point in the budget process. What the selectmen have done, that amount comes from the University Station unused levy, showing that at the bottom of the slide. In the current year, we ended fiscal 2019 with just over $1 million in unused levy, $555,000 from University Station, and we looked at that on the University Station slides, $542,000 coming from other, where the other new growth exceeded that budget estimate. So when we go on a budget basis to 2020, we're taking that $555,000, and then the $125,000 of new University Station growth, uh, for FY '20, and say there'd be $680,000 of available funds for University Station to look at in our budget process. Our initial base budget, we kind of set that aside, and say, what could we do under our normal parameters of 2 and 1/2, and then talk about, what do you need to do with the, the University Station money? Uh, so now, looking at that revenue, uh, all of our revenue for FY '20. So first, on the real estate, as we just went through, we would have $2.9 million in increased revenue for FY '20, coming from 1.9, our 2 and 1/2 growth, $450,000 of our new growth estimate, non-University Station, and then we do pick up that $542,000 from the prior year. On a budget basis, we, we build that in and say, we're gonna, essentially, this is, um, going to our maximum levy, uh, under Prop position 2 and 1/2, without the University Station. So it gives us $2.9 million. In our early budget, look, at this point in the year, looking at our other categories, we're not factoring any additional aid. So state aid, the governor's budget doesn't come out till the end of January, so at this point in the process, we level fund state aid, and then we'll look to see, uh, a little bit later in January, um, what we might expect, if there might be an increase, um, in state aid. Local receipts, also, um, we would level fund, uh, for what we have in the current budget, so no increase, uh, in FY '20. And then for free cash, we went through that at one of your prior meetings, we have a balance that will allow us to use similar revenue, uh, as we have in the current years. So in total, about $2.9 million new revenue coming for the next year's budget, above what we have today. That's very standard number that we've seen the last couple of years, very consistent when we look under five-year forecasts, and the reason that's so standard is because our main tax revenue is driven by a formula, so it's really just a, uh, very, uh, knowable, sustained number each year. The other item we look at, uh, early when we're doing budget projections, is our fixed costs. So this slide shows, uh, the total fixed costs that the town pays, and that includes our employee benefit costs for all of our school and municipal employees, health insurance, payroll taxes, retirement assessments, unemployment, workers' comp, all of those categories, as well as our comprehensive insurance accounts. So that, uh, category of items is $14.6 million in the current year, and we just show on the bottom how that's split between, um, school and municipal, but, uh, covers all of those various categories and employees that I mentioned, $14.6 million. On the next page, we're looking at, what's the projection for the increase in that bucket for FY '20? And right now, we would be looking at that that bucket would increase about 4% or $599,000 for FY '20. And this is just the detail on how we come up with that. Our pension assessment, we have received our initial assessment from Norfolk County, um, it's a 7% increase over the current year. Uh, the current year's budget is carrying a bit higher number than our actual, so we really only need to set aside about $80,000 to meet the assessment that we know we'll have in FY '20. Our health insurance, uh, estimate, right now, at this point, 5%. And that's the increase estimate we've been given, that looks like what we could expect to come from GIC, uh, for FY '20. That costs us about $295,000. And then we've listed the other items there, uh, expectations for our cost for some of those other items, um, payroll taxes, um, other insurance costs. So altogether, about $599,000. And again, the, the health insurance is one number that we do have to monitor, 5% increase that we're using as our working number at this point. The GIC does significant plan updates in February, and then gives us rates, final rates in March. So we know a little bit later on, kind of after, uh, definitely not till February, uh, but we think this 5% is a good working number.
We know before we wrap up the budget recommendation, the Finance Commission at the end of March.
Yes. So we try to have a number that, um, obviously is conservative, so we know we have enough to cover these costs, uh, but it's not wildly overestimated, uh, we think it's just a good ballpark.
When we talk about these percentage increases, though, 5% for healthcare costs, um, is high, it's outside of the national average. 7% increases for pension liability. I, I think these numbers have to be part of the discussion when we look at adding new positions.
And why do you mean that?
Because we're, we're building cost into perpetuity here. So the more employees we get.
I just wanted to make sure I understood your point.
We're spending more and more money, more and more of, of our money on staff, and that's less and less for programming, right? And I just think we need to be cognizant of that.
Yeah, the healthcare costs are, are high, that whole bucket of fixed costs is $14.6 million, quite significant, again, for all of our school and municipal employees, yeah, with the pension and the healthcare costs being, uh, the real drivers. I will point out the, the pension cost, that the 7% increase is actually much better than it's been the last couple of years. I think one or two budget cycles ago, for two years in a row, we had about a 15% increase. It's quite a hit, uh, because what we do in the budget is say, well, we have new revenue to work with, we need to provide for these costs first, because we're in a pension system, we have to pay that assessment, we're providing healthcare costs, we have to set aside the funds for those fixed costs before we can look at our, uh, other programming or other operating budget needs. So the pension was a bit better, uh, this year, they're required to have an update, uh, actuarial update every other year. Every pension system in the States on a mandatory funding schedule to be fully funded by 2030, um, so they have to kind of assess out what they need, and it's been, it's a bit better this year.
And I guess, I'm, I'm just thinking of, you know, some of the write-ups on the request for additional staff, it talks about additional cost, which represents like an annual salary, but I think we need to think really much more long-term.
Yes.
When we add a position, we add that pension cost, we add that healthcare cost.
Yep.
Um, 14% of our, is it 14 million of 98?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a lot of money.
It's fixed costs, it's a lot of money. Yep.
Pam, excuse me, but I, on the, um, the notes on that last slide, uh, there's a comment about GIC looking at restricting plans. There was a false start to do that about a year ago, where they were gonna dramatically change what was available and pulled back on that. Is this indicating that something is imminent?
Too fast. I think they are always looking to revise plans, they're always really trying to look at what the, can they do to contain costs.
As they should.
Yep. So I think you will see that again this year. Definitely last year, they got out way too ahead, uh, and, and ended up pulling back from all that. Um, and I think our rate increases last year were, uh, not too bad, in the 4 to 5%.
I was gonna say, I think it sounds similar to what last year was.
Yes, yes, but I would expect to see, um, a constant review by them of what they're offering each and every year. Uh, and then just looking at the operating budget, and how that might change for FY '20. So the operating budget is the largest area spending in the overall budget. Um, in the current year, out of that 98 million, we spend $65 million, or almost 67% of that budget, on the school and municipal operating budgets. So each year, what we provide for those budgets for that one year's, um, cost to service the community. So we look in terms of, what does that cost us to increase it, going from year to year? So each 1% increase costs about $657,000, with about $449,000 from the schools and $208,000 from municipal, again, based on what their current budgets are in, in the current year. School, just over $44 million, municipal, uh, 20 million. So, 1% is $657,000, 2 and 1/2% increase, 1.6 million, a 3% increase, 1.97 million, 4% increase, 2.6 million. We show these, just, um, you know, when you talk in terms of, we'll just increase a budget 1 or 2%, it sounds low, it adds up very quickly to, uh, significant dollars, that again, we have to work within the caps that we have. So the next slide, we just look at putting it all together, and again, this is very early in the process, and just kind of our very rough overview, we look at what we just talked about, we have about $2.9 million in new revenue coming from our, uh, property tax formula, uh, our fixed cost expenses, the $599,000, and then a smaller amount, $55,000 for, uh, a small increase in that annual OPEB appropriation, and just a couple of other small items in the budget. It kind of gives us a net amount available as we start to look at, um, our operating budgets of $2.2 million, and then just showing how that compares to what we just looked at, the 1, 2 and 1/2, 3%. Again, a 3% costs us 1.97, uh, which is in that range of the $2.2 million available. So our standard formula under Prop 2 and 1/2 can fund about a 3% increase each year of the school and municipal operating budgets within Prop 2 and 1/2. And again, that's something you see each and every year, it's really, um, unless there's extremes on either end, with declines in revenue, state aid being cut, or super-high increases in fixed costs, this is our standard amount every year, uh, what Prop 2 and 1/2 lets us do, about the 3% increase to the operating budget. And this slide just shows, uh, what the operating budget growth has been in town for the last couple of years. Uh, in the last two budget years, we've been within that 3% range for school and municipal. In FY '16 and '17, as I mentioned on the earlier slides with University Station, we used some additional revenue from University Station to shore up those budgets, uh, so we were in more the 4 and 5% increase range. We needed to use the University Station revenue, uh, to meet that growth that was required in those years. So again, our early, uh, projections for FY '20 is that we would be able to fund the 3% increase. And then just very quickly, looking at, uh, capital, uh, our current base capital has been about $1.7 million for school and municipal capital, we use free cash to fund that, we do have, uh, the free cash certification, uh, in line to continue, so the initial proposed budget for '20 would be to continue, uh, at that capital level. We also, in the last couple of budget years, have done capital above that, an additional article each year at town meeting, and we would again have the free cash to continue with that, as we've done the last couple of years.
Pam, in the school budget, we, we've typically tried to like pick off one item, two, uh, for capital, like last year, I think we did the elevator, is there, are there some ideas floating for this year?
Uh, yes, they've kind of put forth a couple of things, uh, that they have to be in that article, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so, other items that you'll need to talk about over the next, uh, several meetings as you further develop the budget, as I mentioned, the University Station revenue, so right now, um, kind of on the side, about $680,000 of, uh, funding available that's not been permanently allocated into the budget, coming from what wasn't used in the current year, and then new growth estimates for, um, FY '20. So that can be used in a number of ways, if it's needed to be used for the operating budgets, again, to fund that above what we could do without going for an override to the community, if it's needed for additional capital items, or if, uh, it can be unallocated, and again, kind of give some of that tax relief, or a combination of those things. Uh, state aid, uh, we'll have to see if there'll be any additional Chapter 70 aid, uh, the education aid coming in the governor's budget, there's actually quite a bit of pressure on, uh, the governor's office to, to provide additional Chapter 70, and to try to deal with, as the board's talked about before, some of those inequities in the formula, um, with the Chapter 70 allocation, so that's something. Uh, and then as you've talked about before, the meals and hotel tax, um, how to allocate that money into the budget, particularly using it for some capital items. Uh, and this next slide you've seen before, it's just a little bit of the detail of how that meals and hotel, um, revenue has been coming in, um, each year. At the end of June 30th, there was about $740,000 in the account from the meals and hotel tax. Again, this is additional revenue coming from the University Station project, really. Uh, we've used a piece of this at last year's town meeting to fund some significant, um, one-time capital projects that serve the entire community, um, so there could be, uh, a continuation of that in the FY '20 budget. So your base budget at this point, uh, under the current scenarios and the tip- So your base budget at this point, under the current scenarios and the typical things that you do, would be looking to do the 3% increase to school and municipal, helping to give them a consistent increase to provide services going forward, continue that high level of capital, $1.75 million of our base capital, with an additional capital that we could do above that, continues the progress on OPEB liability. We would fund $1.44 million in the OPEB liability, which keeps us in very good shape with that and on track, and we would continue that small annual funding to our stabilization or main savings account, and that keeps us on track with that. So we call this our base budget. We're early in the process, there's another, you know, two solid months of work before we even get to kind of, you know, coming out with your budget. And with that in mind, just a quick, quick slide again, we're super early on the municipal budget. Some of the early requests, when we put that together, we're looking at a budget of about a 6% requested increase, and then with some new positions for you to consider whether that could be allocated, would bring us up to over a 7% requested increase. So some work to do there to kind of go through all of that and go through that with the board, and start to sort that out.
This is great, thank you. Just a couple of things, Mike. At the January 7th meeting, we're going to look at the requested new positions, and I know for me, I just want to see a lot of data. I'd like to know what current staff is doing and what the need is, and there was some talk in some of the write-ups about best practices and things like that. Chief Decker's talked about actual increase in calls, so you can tie potentially new staffing to that. I really would like to see the same across the board. I think we always have to be careful when we're adding positions. I know the creep every year of what we're spending in salaries. I know we're getting great service, but people need to recognize, the more we spend on salary, the less we spend on programming, right? So at some point, there's a tension point. So I just, I think we really need to have a robust look at those requests, and I would expect a lot of backup.
And we always, the board always does a great job at really being cautious in adding new positions and really making sure that, you know, you're deliberate in adding those into the budget, because the town has operated such that, you know, we don't just kind of add positions and then take them away another year. We don't like to add positions unless they're sustainable, so that if we do have a little bit of downturn, we're not laying off police and fire and kind of operating in that kind of atmosphere. The board's done a great job of, you know, being very cautious with staffing levels so that they're sustainable and that departments and the residents know that we can, you know, kind of sustain the services for what we're doing.
But I think anything you can provide in terms of historical data, I mean, it seems to me, looking at some of this, that we've added a number of positions over the past few years, but we've also seen overtime increase, right? So I just, I need to understand that a little bit more, because sometimes the justification we heard was that overtime would decrease. So now we have more people earning over, you know, it just, something seems amiss there to me, so I'd like to understand that.
Yes, and with the public safety in particular, those were positions that we have added to over the last couple of years, and particularly as the University Station project has come on, and it's been, the segment have been very, you know, cautious again in trying to match, you know, well, what really is the service need? How has it changed with that project? What staffing level do we need? And to make sure that we're, you know, matching it to data.
Right, right. I just, I think sustainability is the word, though.
There was also, part of our call volume for public safety was attributed to the operations of the Westwood Lodge, which we now have a year-plus of data without that, and I think understanding how that was either offset or whatever, but we haven't been with the same base, just adding University Station on. We had a drop-off in an area. That was a significant contributor to call volume. So we need that.
The condos, which is residential, becomes a major contributor, residential, just, so...
But I'm just, University Station is an add-on, but the base actually went down first.
Yeah.
So.
So I think, I just don't want to be asking those questions in January. It'd be nice before I'll, can really have a good review.
Yes, and so at your next several meetings, we'll be doing pieces of the budget. We continue to meet with the long-range planning and our budget steering. We've been meeting regularly with both those groups, and we'll have you look at new positions. We'll update on fixed costs and the revenue, such as state aid, as that comes in. We gave a quick look at the capital budget items. As always, there's significant capital requests. The segment have done a terrific job in funding a lot of capital, but there's always kind of more projects that exceed what we can do. So we'll continue over the next month and a half to try to sort through and prioritize those to get to what we can do this year, and which things will have to wait till another year. And the one timeline that we focus on is that you come out with an initial budget document February 1, and we go and present that to the FinCom February 5, and that's just where is the budget at that point, that they then start to review and vet for town meeting.
Thanks, Pam.
Do you think we can go to old business and allow people to move along?
We can do that, sure.
I don't think that will take long.
I was thinking the same thing at the time, before we get into the next one.
Yeah, well, the other things that we have.
Yes. All right, so we're going to take things out of order here for a second. We're going to go to, on the old business, we're going to go to new appointments, since we have Mr. Usalian here, and we're also going to put our town clerk, Dottie Powers, on the screening committee for legal services. So, questions?
No.
Nancy, questions?
No, just Gary. Glad you want to do it again.
Thank you.
That's much appreciated.
I haven't scared you away yet, Gary.
No, there's been some turnover, and it's nice that you would like to stay on, so much appreciated.
Page 104.
Eileen, I'm assuming you're here because you agree.
And just in case Gary was naming new appointments, for what commitment that's going to be?
Great.
Okay. Eileen, Gary, thank you. We ready for motion?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Gary Usalian as a member of the Dedham-Westwood Water Commission for term to expire on December 31, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Just like that. Thank you for coming in, Gary.
And Dottie, are you gonna?
Yeah.
Do Dottie.
I move that we appoint Dottie Powers as a member to the screening committee for legal services for term to expire on June 30, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Going back on to old business, do we just want to do the media transfer while we're here? So we have been asked to transfer funds from the Comcast and Verizon per the contracts of the PEG access funding to the Westwood Media Center. So we have a total of, where is my last page? $20,089.28, as well as $3,214.23 from Comcast, and $45,721.66 from Verizon, together totaling $69,025.17 to the Westwood Media Center, per the license agreements from the Westwood Media Center agreements signed by us some time ago.
I move that the board approve the transfer of $20,089.28, $3,214.23 from Comcast, and $45,721.66 from Verizon, totaling $69,025.17 to Westwood Media Center per the license agreements and the Westwood Media Center agreement signed by this board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going back to our new business. Should we go back? Let's go back. One more. To our Morrison Park status update, since Nicole has come in to join us. Nicole?
Hi, thank you.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Excellent, thank you.
Good. I have to say, I love Nancy's sticker on her laptop. We are getting advertising out of every moment of this meeting.
It will not go anywhere.
Westwood Day. So this is one meeting that I'm not here to talk about Westwood Day. I'm sure that'll be coming up within a month or so. So I want to just bring forward some options that we have put together for Morrison Park. And if everybody remembers, we had the Islington Fire Station project, which necessitated the removal of a tennis court at that site. And so as they went through that construction project, we took some time to get together some cost estimates and some options for what we could do to finish off that site and bring Morrison Park up to a completed phase at the end of this project. We also had a little bit further of a delay as we went into the East Street Bridge construction, and we're now coming toward the end of that. I don't know the exact dates for finishing that up, but portions of that project have been brought underway. And so we expect to be able to move forward soon with finishing off some options in that park. So in order to do that, just wanted to bring back several options, which have been reviewed by some of our boards and committees, and we have some recommendations here, and want to get some input and advice on how to move forward and what you would like to see happen at that site. So you have a memo which outlines basically three options, and we worked with an engineer, environmental partners, to put together the design options and the cost estimates. The first option is the option to replace the tennis court. This would be replacing a single-lit tennis court, but it would necessitate moving the current basketball site. So the basketball court that is there would be removed, and the footprint changed to accommodate the tennis court in addition to the basketball court being rebuilt. So this option is one that would replace the single-lit tennis court that was there previously, but has not been recommended. And so our Recreation Commission and the Long Range Financial Planning Committee do not recommend moving forward with the replacement, and that's for several reasons. Some of those are that we do have sufficient tennis courts in town. We currently have eight courts. Two are at Downey, which are in close proximity to the Morrison Park, and the other six are at the high school. We have also moved forward with the project to light the six at the high school, at the high school complex. And so with that new project online, we would have lit court availability in the evening, with plenty of parking and plenty of options there for evening tennis play. The Rec Commission also discussed the overall park saturation, and this also gets us into a discussion about the parking availability, which will show you some options for parking at that site as well. If you look at the Morrison complex, we have the Little League field, which is a highly, highly utilized field, and also a softball field. During the construction of the fire station, the softball field, the outfield was cut a bit short, but we were able to work to get a safety net put in place and continue to use that quite a bit for both youth and adult softball sport programming. The, both groups, Long Range Financial Planning, as well as the Recreation Commission, felt that the cost of the project was significantly high. In comparison to some other court projects that we've worked on recently, this cost is quite a bit higher, and that is due to needing to change the entire footprint of the complex. So you do need to remove the basketball court, which is also a lighted facility, and then reintroduce that space. It also requires a retaining wall in that area. I mentioned the parking, and to utilize this current footprint for where the tennis and basketball courts would be placed, we would lose some overflow parking that's currently used in that area, and so that is a concern. And also, the tightness of the space, we do need to eliminate or at least reposition the pitcher's mound warm-up area for the baseball field as it's currently being used. So those were some of the reasons why option number one was not recommended. Are there any questions, or do you want me to go on to the next options?
You're calm.
I'll go on to the next options. Okay, lay it all out for you. So option two is on page three of your handout. This option is an option to provide some parking in the area. This is the parking that is currently utilized as overflow parking right now. So this is the area that's in front of the fire department building, what was currently being used as the temporary fire building, and now, I believe, has been turned back to a storage area. And, you know, like I said, this parking is being used a little bit more haphazardly right now, and this would formalize the parking in that, in this area. It would provide us with approximately 12 spaces of parking, and would provide a lit, safe parking area that would, you know, handle what is currently being used for parking. It is important to note, it's not really a net increase in parking, it's currently being used for overflow parking as well.
But when it's actually, if we were to go with this option, I mean, there's got to be some formalization. I mean, right now, people are just kind of squeezing where they can. How many actual spaces would we add?
Right, so the way we have this designed and layout, this would add about 12 spaces.
Okay. And Nicole, the cost of that?
So that option is $320,000. Option number one is $725,000. That brings us to option number three. Option number three is also a parking option for that space. Option number three would remove the storage garage facility that is currently there, which would allow expansion of the parking in that area. In this design, we would have approximately 21 spaces of parking added in that area. The, what this would allow is to accommodate, you know, sort of all the park uses in there. So I believe we have just over 30 spaces in the lot that currently exists. This would also be a lighted parking area and would provide, you know, the amount of parking spaces that would be recommended for this facility. So we do know that even with the overflow parking that's currently being used, which is about the amount that you get in option two, but in a more formalized pattern, we do have people that are parking currently across the street, in the ICC parking lot, and then some in the municipal lot across, and crossing both East Street and Washington Street. So that is, you know, a bit of a safety hazard trying to get across those streets, and I believe the municipal parking is going to be moving all over to the other side of the street, so that would, you know, cause the need for, the potential for crossing two streets there. So this is a nice option as far as the park uses go, because you expand your parking and allow them to park right on-site. You think about, you know, arriving for a baseball game or a softball game, everybody's unloading from the car, you've got your kids getting out, and all of the paraphernalia that you bring with you. Just a bit safer of an option where you're getting out right on the park side and going directly into the park access area.
And I guess that's where I struggle. I mean, we are, you're adding nine spaces.
So this one would accommodate 21 spaces in that area.
Versus 12.
Versus 12, yep.
So we're talking about a net of nine for a lot of money, and we'll continue to have overflow use.
Yep, and so I will tell you, the Recreation Commission did take a look at these options. They did not put forward a recommendation. You know, they did note that the DPW utilizes the storage there, but they felt that it was up for the town to make the decision on taking a look at the parking needs and safety aspects of the plan and the design. And then the Long Range Financial Planning had, you know, similar concerns to what John brought up, in that the additional cost of the spaces for the net gain in parking spaces, you know, looking at that extra cost. If you break it out like that, you know, and think about paying for parking space, I think the idea here is to try to think about the park as a whole complex, and what are the actual parking needs on-site? And, you know, if you were going to design that park and go before the planning board for review, what would you want to have for parking? And we know that currently what's being, what's there, you know, for the overflow parking is not enough to accommodate. So certainly, the option, option three would be the only option where we would get additional parking. In option number one, we would actually lose parking from the overflow space that we have right now that we know is currently used. Option number two basically keeps us at the same amount of parking, and option three would be the one that would add additional parking, so.
And I guess I go back to, the driver of much of this discussion is that we need to resurface the basketball court, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we've been holding on that project. So the Recreation Capital Plan has included sort of finishing off that park and bringing it up to the caliber that the baseball field and the softball field have been put into.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So that would be something that we are ready to put that project forward. The funding is available and in place through the Recreation Revolving Fund, and we would move forward with that as soon as a decision was made. We, you know, wouldn't really want to expend those funds if, you know, we were going to be talking about... be talking about tearing out that basketball court.
But, but I think the basketball court is at a point that the tennis courts were at last year where you can't, there's no more crack throwing that will make it safe.
Yeah, no, and we need to fix it, and you have the money.
Yeah.
And I guess from me, there's, there's so many moving pieces, questions around the future of the Hanlon site, right, questions around the future of the Sheehan site. So I, I feel like we've kind of, we've kind of boxed ourselves in a little bit of a one tennis court, right, when there could be other options in very close proximity. I mean, I, I think what's, I just think we need to move forward with fixing the basketball court. And I feel like we've kind of made ourselves a little hostage to it, so.
We've been keeping the basketball.
Circumstances did, because of the fire, temporary fire station.
No, no, I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it. It's like a Rubik's Cube, I know. But, but we need to fix the, the tennis court is in severe disrepair.
Yes.
And it's, it's really bad. And we have the money, we need to fix it.
Basketball court.
Basketball court, I'm sorry.
And we've kept it safe. We did patch repair the past two years to just get through, to keep it open to the public, but we aren't running any programming there at this point, because it just isn't in a condition.
And if you look at it in comparison to the baseball fields and the softball field out back, you're talking, you're talking qual, high quality versus low quality.
Yeah, I think we'd really like to see that park finished off. It's going to be in a really nice area. There's a lot of refurbishment going on there, and it'd be great to see the park get completed.
So I appreciate these options, but I feel like there's even more options. Like, I feel like, I'm not saying we should never build a tennis court again in Islington, but I think we should keep it as a live thought and factor it into all of these other changes that are going to take place with the multiple properties. I don't know why we can't have that as an option.
Future tennis development. I mean, I, I think looking at the footprint of the space, we've got a lot being offered in this park already.
Yeah, it's really tight, yeah.
And it's very, very tight. You know, this, this design, you've got very, very minimal space in between the two courts, the new basketball court and the tennis court layout. And, you know, I mentioned that it even impacts sort of that warm-up area for the baseball field, which, you know, that's been designed to really be a premier field. And so it's just not a lot of space, and there's a lot of uses going on in there.
And I, I don't know, you know, a single tennis court, if someone shows up to play tennis and it's being utilized, you know, I, I, it just, it doesn't seem so functional, and then you have people driving around. Whereas if you look at the other tennis courts in town, they're clusters. So I, I just, I, I just feel like we're, like I said, I feel like we're, we've kind of boxed ourselves in, and I think we could think of some other options and, and do what needs to be done in the immediate, which is fix the basketball court.
Nicole, what's, what is the driving factor between 320 and 513,000 to add nine spots?
Removal of the building.
Cost a hundred thousand dollars to remove the building?
And, and pave it, and put lights.
Probably some extended lighting, that is a lighted parking area.
That doesn't take into account what's been put into the building recently for the use by the fire department and everything, so there's also less cost.
And so, looking at it, can it be moved? So when I'm looking at option three, if you were to tip it sideways instead of keeping it straight as it is and just turn the building, would it fit in there? Do we know? So if you went basically to the end of the parking lot with 21 spots, will it fit between the basketball court and the parking lot? So we don't have to demolish it, we just basically turn it?
Shift it?
Looks like it can fit.
No, it doesn't. In that triangle?
Yes. It would have to be turned, obviously, but it would, and if we lost one spot.
Well, because I think this trailer building is, is gone, correct? So that, that's no longer there. So you're saying turn it so that it is...
Basically, it's parallel with the basketball court.
It's a brick building.
I'm saying it's a lot cheaper to move it than it is to demolish it. We move buildings all the time.
We do move a lot of buildings.
I don't think this one moves the traditional way.
I don't even know what the foundation is for this.
Because of blocks, I don't think it can, I don't think it...
Well, I'm just saying, if we, you know, if we, the big issue between two and three is the demolishing it, isn't there a way that we can still save it and still get more parking spots and a place for the DPW to store their equipment? If we're going to utilize the space, why not utilize all of it?
Yeah, I don't know that we want a DPW parking garage at the end of a parking lot, though.
They're usually cutting the grass at seven o'clock in the morning. They, most of that stuff is used for that field.
Well, when we had the Town Facilities meeting last week, the task force meeting, I recommended to Mike that Todd, Mike, Nicole, and whomever else needs to be discussing this meet. I don't know that that's happened. So, I mean, I don't, I think there's somebody missing from the conversation that should be part of it. We can't just randomly move a building here and think we know it's the right thing to do or cost-effective thing to do.
Well, I just actually want to turn to the taxpayers either and say, like, you built this nice functional building, and now we're going to dismantle it.
Yeah, no, we can't decide it here, is my point.
Right, right, no, I get it, I get it.
I think there might be a middle ground here.
I do, too.
And this is what, one of the options might be a one slash, a two slash three. Right now, we could keep, the possibility would be to keep the shed in operation, put on and pave the parking lot in front so it's better arranged, so we can maximize the parking that goes over there on overflow. I foresee a problem with crossing the street, but that problem's, that problem's going to be complicated in a couple, three years when construction starts across the street on Phase Three of the development, which is where people are parking to, when they can't find parking at, on the adjacent land to the, to the park. And at that point, there's going to be a squeeze on the number of parking, because the alternative is to park way across the street at the community's, the newly constructed community center and have to cross two major streets, Washington Street and NE Street. These are almost four-lane roadways and those crossings. It's just a long wait and heavily traveled roadways to have children crossing. I've always been concerned about this. The crossing, there's been, for years, there's been a move to try and get a crosswalk from the entrance across, you know, apart from the intersection, and that would be extremely dangerous. The Public Safety Office was absolutely adamant, he'd never stand for a crosswalk to be put there. People should be crossing at the lights, because that's what's the controlled area to give them safe passage, but nobody ever does. They always cross it.
But Mike, I guess where I get stuck is even with the nine spots, your scenario's going to happen.
Yeah, well, nine spots is, is the parent of, assuming they come in one car, of one, one of the baseball teams that's playing. I mean, it's nine spots.
You're extrapolating a lot of wishes into that one.
I actually would say, even though distance being an issue with the, what will be the new municipal lot on the CVS library side, to get over to the ball field, the crosswalk, the lighted crosswalk, the signalization would be used. What's happening now when they leave behind the Islington Community Center and CVS lot is they're jaywalking, the old term.
Right, yeah.
They aren't walking down to the crosswalk and then coming back up. So, you know, one actually forces them to do it more safely, even though it's a four-lane road. It's, it's still got crosswalk, intersection, lighting, and everything else. So, I mean...
But you'll also...
Distance is the issue, but we just don't have enough geography around here to not have that happen.
And the hope was, too, with the reconstruction of the East Street Bridge, that you make a safe pedestrian passage from the neighborhood on the other side of the bridge, right? So ideally, people who are now driving to that park will walk, still have the capability, so.
Have the capability of walking on a sidewalk.
Which they never had before. So I think there's a lot of variables that drive it. But I, I still think, I think for tonight's purposes, for Nicole, I think we need to, we need to set some direction, at least on, I think, coming to a resolution on the basketball court.
Right.
Well, they wouldn't be doing that work until the spring anyway, right?
Well, I mean, option number one, if, you know, you feel comfortable weighing in on that, I think option twos, two and three would be the second phase of it, and so there's time. And there's nothing that's solidified about the exact layout of what's there for option two and three. We're just trying to show what, what would you get in each scenario and what would the cost be, you know, to move, move the garage. I mean, we haven't really looked into that, you know, or do you just, you do build another garage somewhere else? I, I don't know. It's, you know, we'd have to talk to Todd about the storage needs and look at the locations that are around. You know, I just think the footprint of this park is, it's just highly saturated with all the uses in there. You've got a lot going on, and we know that with the uses, that parking, you know, there for the, for the complexes is needed. So, you know, additional spots gets us a little closer to, to where we need to be. Both options improve the parking. So, you know, having a safer layout of how to place your cars and have lit parking is, is a good improvement as well. I think it's just, do you, do you try to maximize as much as you can get for parking, or do you keep the storage?
Nicole, what did we decide on the Downey courts? Are they going to be lit or not lit?
Not lit.
Not lit.
Yep, so those are staying as two courts. Again, we really did hear from the tennis players that it is a benefit to have more than one court when you go there. If you arrive and somebody's on the court, that can be a frustration. You either have to wait or go somewhere else to find a court. So the two courts at Downey are very nice. They've been resurfaced. The surface on them looks great, and we have added a hitting wall. So, single individuals can also play and utilize that space. The neighbors are very, very close in that location, and so, and there's really not a lot of buffer there. So, lights wasn't as good of an option there. Also, at the high school, we had the high school team interest in that and more additional courts and more parking available.
Usually when you have lit courts at night, that gets a lot of play.
Gets a lot of use, yep.
I used to play a lot in Sharon when, where they have lit courts, there's multiple courts, and, and people, even there with six courts, there'll be a little bit of a backup at night sometimes. But when you only have one court, the backup is guaranteed.
So my take on the tennis court here at Morrison is sort of a multi-step one. We had talked when we were building the fire station about revisiting what to do with the tennis court on this site when the project was done. And as you noted, it was delayed because of the East Street Bridge, which we hadn't expected at that time to not only move up in an attention span at the state level, but actually be funded, designed, and constructed by the state.
That's shocking, but...
Shocking. So that got us to, now we're looking at this, and it is highly dense and problematic. You've noted other things like sort of serving per capita, the amount of tennis courts we have without this is reasonable, but we still made a statement that we would look at this. So we've looked at it. This site doesn't look like it can handle it. But I go to John's point next, and that is, we shouldn't stop looking at what to do with the tennis court. I know there was some consideration for Hanlon, but now the schools have a very large undertaking to look at what to do with elementary schools, the Hanlon being the one that got the attention of the MSBA, the School Building Authority, and selected to be pursued. So that's something else that we didn't know back when the fire station was being pursued, that the Hanlon would be part of the discussion. So we can't go to the schools at this point when they aren't sure what's going on with that site and get them to commit to anything. I know the chairman of the school committee's here, and we won't ask you to commit to anything. But we should have a placeholder in our collective minds and in our analysis of this, that at some point, there might be an opportunity. We'll evaluate it, but I don't think we should stop considering that. I think we, as much as we may have per capita, at one point, we did have that tennis court, and we did have Downey, and we did have the high schools, and we weren't saying, let's get rid of one, we don't need it. We said, we have a site, we have to build a fire station, we'll look at where that can go somewhere else. And maybe the somewhere else is two tennis courts because of what you said.
If we've got the space for it, that would be a preference, yep.
If we had the space, that might be the smarter way to do it. So I still am committed to finding a way to replicate that tennis court, but it doesn't look like the time is now at this location. It just, and I hope this gets put online so people can see, the idea of taking away from the ball field in any way when they already had to have some forfeiture because of the fire station, the idea of doing that further to the quality of the baseball field that we have doesn't make sense. Adding more density back to the site, we already are talking about parking and every other issue. Again, it doesn't make sense. It's probably not the right place, but let's find another place. I still think we should do that.
And honestly, I mean, you're not going to convince people to spend $725,000 to put one tennis court in.
I'm not even at that point.
I know, I'm just saying.
I'm not even at that point.
No, I agree.
We took something away that we said we wanted to bring back.
We did, we promised, I think.
Well, we said we would look at the site when the project was done. We're looking at it, and it really doesn't work for a lot of reasons. Expense being part of it.
There may be other opportunities.
There may be other opportunities.
Right, that's what I think, too.
Agree with that.
And in the meantime, what we've done is, we've agreed to put lights at the high school court, which hopefully is imminent. We've resurfaced the Downey court, which improves the quality of play there, which hopefully will attract more people to it. So it's not like we're not making things better and extending use with the lights once they're there.
Absolutely.
So I think we're taking action, and thanks to the rec department, you, and the commission, I think that's a good thing. So we have to keep working at it. Things don't always happen right away, and this is by far not right away, but it's still not yet. And that's where I am on it.
You think we can clearly say that one is out, option one is out, and that somewhere between two, two and a half, three is what we're looking at?
Well, I think two is the leader right now, and you have to do some more work.
I think two is the leader as well, and I, and I think that one of the answers would be to think in the future, so go forward, go forward the commitment that you don't do a tennis court this year, go forward the commitment that you're going to do the parking in the front half, and keep the option open that someday it may be necessary to take that garage, relocate it, and continue with the parking. But experience what 12 additional spaces with lessened demand, with lessened pressure. I mean, this parking lot wasn't available for the last year because of the last few years, because of the fire station and then because of the MBTA.
For in three years.
So let's add 12 more parking spaces in, see how, how that works, see how much crossing goes on, and if we think that nine spaces would...
Then we revisit it.
Yeah, revisit it.
But we need to do the court, too.
Because you can always take down the shed.
Well, it's not a shed, it's a garage. The shed sounds like it's in my backyard.
I agree.
A block building, substantial building.
It's more substantial building, I think we all need to understand that better.
Basketball court as well, yeah.
I can't tell, I mean, looking at the diagrams, and I'm, I can't really tell how big the building is from the diagram.
It was big enough to house fire trucks.
Fire truck.
Two.
Two.
For a couple of years, so it's not inconsequential.
It's not an insignificant building.
And, yeah, I...
It's deep, when you walk in with it.
It is.
It's got depth.
They put some additional depth on, they put some new doors, wired in.
Right, so money was spent on it.
So Nicole, do you have a sense of...
Yeah, no, I think that sounds great. I, I think that really gives us a direction. You know, we'll, we'll re-put in our options for the capital plan and move forward with the basketball court refurbishment and put a placeholder. And I think that we actually just had a huge Fields discussion about, you know, the school decision and sort of taking a look, you know, long-term, needing some of those answers before we really know which direction we can go into. And I think option two gives us some parking options for now. There's a lot of development change going on in the area, so we see how people are utilizing it and see how the new space works, and we'll know more.
Yeah, organizing it. It's not dissimilar to Deerfield Avenue and the cut-through with American Legion where people were doing stuff and parking randomly, but it was chaotic, not safe, deteriorated roads and everything. Organizing it and giving it structure and definition, like a defined parking lot like this, helps.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be much safer.
You're right on the American Legion situation, that parking has significantly improved. They almost accommodate 100% of their parking needs on-site.
That was a win-win. It just, it addressed a lot of issues. This will improve at a time when improvements are needed here with the construction that will be taking place, so.
Okay, great, I think we have a good plan.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you for your review. Few options and maybe more to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we?
New business.
Let's change the name of the board.
Let's change the name.
Oh, yeah. Proposed charter change. Another new business. So, we have a proposed charter amendment process to change the name of the Board of Selectment to the Select Board Discussion. So this is a, it's been brought to the town's attention and that we should undergo a name change to draft language of the town meeting to achieve a gender-neutral name, more likely than not the Select Board. And we would call the chairperson or chairmen at that point in time just the chair.
Well, this was a goal, so I feel like this is just the next logical step. I think we had agreed on this as a goal, so.
Right, we did, you did agree to it as a goal. This is something that's... So I think that the time is now.
And the other communities, is, is the name change going to Select Board? Have you seen a different name?
That's the trend.
Yeah.
When I brought this up, it was, I was reading about it in a lot of other communities, and the process described here is very similar to, for instance, Nantucket. They, they, they proactively, as a board, said, we're gonna change our name. They voted to change it, and then they'll go through the steps of having it adopted through the charter, but from an operational, day-to-day standpoint, they made the name changed and they moved forward with it. And it, it's, it's fairly clean. It's the current trend that is growing. You, you can read, many municipalities are making the change now. And this seems to be the standard reference, so what helps is, it is becoming the standard reference, so people will quickly get comfortable with it.
I just expect that'll be a question at town meeting.
Yeah. And so, uh, the other thing that, that I wanna make sure is clear, this does not require a charter commission to make this change.
Yeah, we'll just do it on our...
Significant change in a governance structure, just a name change. And so what you do is, you can propose it in an article at this upcoming town meeting, get it passed, and then subsequent election, the following spring, elect it. It's the same thing that we did with the term, the changing of term from one year to three-year for the collector, the treasurer, and the town clerk.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
So we should approve it and it become effective January one from an operational standpoint?
Yes.
So the only thing that, that I think of financially is, are we gonna have to change all the stationary thing? Why can't we just use up the stationary first and then...
Because we print it out new every time because of word processing.
There's no need to change the stationary. The way we set up our stationary, it's...
It's online.
It's online. We, we add to it, so...
Yeah.
We, we actually pulled out everything and, and we were happy. The only thing is the email address is selectmen@townhall, but we don't have a ton of this. Like, we could run through this probably in a couple months if, if that was okay with the board. And again...
That's fine. I just, I hate to just waste it and, and...
Well, this is probab- we probably have, like, a ream left, you know, so...
It's minor.
It, that, with it just saying selectmen as the email address, we would keep that email address regardless and get a new one that says Select Board. They'd be the same and go to the same place.
What will happen is time will be involved when we actually change our documents.
Right.
And there's a, we have to look into it, but there's a historical or retroactive basis of things needing to be changed. When I was working in Newton, they changed from Board of Aldermen to City Council, and the City Clerk's office had extensive work they needed to do to affect that change in their documents. If we just do an operational change now, it's minor. It's when it actually gets approved for the charter that there's gonna be more work involved, but so many things are online or Word documents that, um, I think that technology helps that. But it's gonna be work. It's, it definitely is.
It'll be good because we can identify every single place where it says Board of Selectmen and, and make a list, and when it does become official, it's an easy...
Right.
Change versus us scrambling and finding everywhere it says.
So what do we get called?
Select Board.
Select Board, is that?
No.
Select Board.
Select members, select person, select members.
Select Board. It's awkward, but the time has come.
It's gonna be hard to not say.
Is it any less awkward than you'd be calling, called a selectman?
No, let's run its course.
Okay. So I move that the board proceed with its name change to Select Board effective January first, two thousand and nineteen, uh, with our intention to place this on a town meeting warrant for next spring's open town meeting.
And ballot in twenty twenty?
Ballot, and if approved, on the ballot in spring of twenty...
Twenty.
Twenty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have the release of the third quarter capital. And so we have three million, four hundred seventy-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars to be released to, which was approved at town meeting.
So I would just, I would just say, Michael, if we can, um, I know some people watch, it's sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. I would move that the board approve this amount for the following uses. Safety equipment, radio upgrade, and turnout gear for the fire department of fifteen thousand. IT, end-user technology for sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven. Police, traffic, safety cameras, and equipment for seventy-five hundred. Ambulance rescue equipment for sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Ambulance self-contained breathing apparatus upgrade of six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars for a total release of sixty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars from our capital budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We did the transfer of funds, right?
Yeah, they should be done, I believe. Right?
Yep, you are.
Okay.
I would make a, one suggestion before we go into executive session. We're getting a number of calls, a number of emails about the bridge, and I, you know, we didn't think of it in the chairman's update. Maybe you wanna say a few words about the fact that we're only halfway through the project.
Sure, okay. I'm happy to say that. So for those of you that, uh, watched the news this weekend, you can see that another truck did hit the bridge on Friday morning at seven o'clock in the morning, like, just before seven. Um, the construction of the bridge is ongoing. To give you an idea, the bridge will be thirteen-six at its completion. Right now, it's only halfway through the completion because they raised it a foot and a half and they're going down a foot and a half, which they cannot do the construction during the winter, obviously, because they have moving utilities and the ground freezes. So that will pick up in the spring. They are continuing to do some of that work as long as the weather holds out, but we all know that we live in New England and it's not gonna hold out much longer. So the bridge is still, uh, not ready and is not complete, and we've put up more signs and banners and everything else and can't quite understand how someone can miss them, although someone did bring up an interesting question to me the other night. Perhaps the signs need to be in a different language as well, believe it or not.
I think the issue is that people, truck drivers, do not know the height of their trucks.
I, I absolutely agree with you.
And I think it's, it's unfortunate, but it's really, I mean, you could see the pictures. There were multiple signs, low clearance banner. There's lack of awareness and I, my thought was, you know, tickets for stupidity.
Well, they do, they do get cited when they...
I know, but I'm talking about an added one because it's just...
Or one for stupid.
And, and nothing that is pending further construction would have prevented that truck from going into the bridge, so...
It's never made to be for an eighteen-wheeler, never.
And if, if the answer was simple, we would've had it a long time ago. But you, we could have multiple signs. Clearly, they don't matter. The signs don't matter. And I don't know what the, um, the signage, I think it's fairly brief towards the rotary, but I think we almost have to do signs and pictures. It's not multiple languages, but it's pictures. I don't know that we can do a no-truck sign with the truck symbol and a thing through it, because some trucks can go through. Uh, it's been suggested to me that maybe because a lot of these trucks are going to Roach Brothers, that we should possibly meet with them and talk to them about their communications with delivery companies, if there can be anything there. Um, I, I think we have to look at it from different ways, but, I mean, it's just people are not aware of what they're driving and what, what the, the height of their vehicles